Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 8th regular meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors. It is usually the custom for us to hold a moment of silence. We ask that you join the board now as we take a couple of deep breaths and prepare for the business ahead this evening. Now, please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Lewis, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
And no special actions. That brings us to our first round of public comment. All those wishing to give public comments, please come forth. Come on ahead. I just want to let you know that, and you can use the podium over there. Yes. I just want to make sure that what you want to talk about is not on the agenda. Okay. Please state your, yeah, turn, there's a little button there.
There we go. How's that?
That's good. Could you state your name and where you're from?
Sure. Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to speak with you. I'm Dr. Robert Fisher. I live at 36 Rittenhouse Circle in Delancey Court, and I'm Vice President of Delancey Court HOA Homeward Association. And tonight, I want to speak to you in turn, in behalf of the board and also the residents of Delancey Court. We request that you reconsider and rescind your recent motion to grant the conditional use application to Durham Investment LP for daycare center medical office building at 413 Durham Road. We've reviewed this decision, and it has significant traffic implications for Delancey Court and the surrounding residential communities. We believe your reconsideration of this decision is merited by three of the following reasons. First, the traffic analysis presented at your April 10th meeting is flawed and inaccurate. The experts stated there will be no impact on traffic because of the parents bringing and picking up their children from preschool already used Durham Road on a regular basis to travel for shopping, dining, and other activities. This reasoning failed to consider that many of the potential students might not live nearby. They could easily come from outlying areas such as Eagle Road, Swamp Road, and potentially Yardley, Richborough, and other surrounding communities that could create incremental traffic. Second point, previously, a regional planning study recommended that any further development in the area of Durham Road be designated as a right-turn-only ingress or egress due to the dangerous and congested traffic that will result from left-hand turns. If PennDOT follows this recommendation, northbound traffic exiting the site will be forced, first head south, potentially making U-turns in either our access road or municipal driveway, and vice versa for northbound traffic. Both of these could create potential situations that might be dangerous and further congestion. And point three, while we understand that this site will ultimately be developed, the amount and flow of traffic is the critical factor for truly understanding the impact on the residents of this area and the citizens of Newtown Township. We previously sent via email a traffic study dated November 28th from Heinrich &amp; Klein Associates of Ambler to you. This study states in the summary that 11 times the current amount of traffic will be generated during the busiest peak hours in the morning and evening, per your current decision. This could clearly result in dangerous undesirable conditions, not only for our residents, but also for all those that use Durham Road on a daily basis. So in conclusion, please re-review, please reconsider, and please rescind your recent decision with consideration of the true traffic implications and their impact on Durham Road, the township, and our community as we know them. So that's it. Thanks for your time and your consideration.
Thank you for your input. Any others this evening? We do have a second round of public comment at the end. Almost there. We have an email that came in for a public comment. Okay. It's brief. No, it's not so brief. So here we go. It's from Jawad Sheikh. "I am unable to attend the Board of Supervisors meeting this evening in person, and would like to have the following objection made at the meeting. My name is Jawad Sheikh, and I am a resident living at Kirkwood Drive, Newtown, within and less than a mile of the proposed construction site of Chick-fil-A at Newtown Yardley Road and Upper Silver Lake Road. We are deeply concerned about the potential negative impacts on our community of a restaurant in our residential neighborhood. This will bring smell, noise, and traffic pollution to our residential neighborhood, and we strongly object to this. Please halt this from moving forward. Thank you." No others? And thanks to Jawad. Any others? All right, we'll move along. There's no minor approvals this evening. There's reports of committees, boards, and commissions. No committees that I'm aware of, but we do have board members' comments. I attended, both Ms. Snyder and I attended the Newtown Fire Association meeting last Monday before last. The takeaway that I came from, came away with is that the Beer Fest fundraisers that they have been doing are discontinued. So there will be no Beer Fest this fall. However, there will be, they will continue fundraising. Their new way of fundraising is a spring gala, and that the next spring gala will be in next year, in 2025. So we have some time to plan on attending that. I attended the Joint Zoning Committee last Thursday. We've made progress on several ordinances. I believe there are about eight or nine ordinances that the jointure is working on. Two of them tonight, we'll hear from our solicitor about those, and the other seven-ish have been compiled in the spreadsheet that the jointure solicitor has been sharing with us. So that will be coming along. I think the other jointure adventure is the Comprehensive Plan, and I believe that'll be on the agenda for the 22nd. Other than that, I would just mention, seeing that we did get a Chick-fil-A comment, that the Chick-fil-A is likely to be on the next agenda as well, on the 22nd. And on the 21st for Planning Commission. I should mention that. So Chick-fil-A zoning hearing board application will be looked at by the Planning Commission on the 21st and by the board on the 22nd. All right, that's all I have. Ms. Snyder, do you have anything?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay. Mr. Secretary/Treasurer, anything?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that I did have a Meet-Mac Monday Zoom meeting on April 29th, and not surprisingly, the Chick-fil-A was the big topic for discussion.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking down that way. Mr. Davis, anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Klabber, anything? All right. We'll move along. Next is public hearing, which we have none. We have no land development this evening. We do, however, have reports of officials, and our engineer, Mr. Kandari, is here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we are here to recommend Financial Security Release Number Eight for the Mayfield Development, formerly Arcadia Newtown Holdings. On behalf of Newtown Township, we reviewed the request, seeking a release of financial security held for the completion of required site improvements at the Mayfield Development. Based upon our inspection of the work completed, RVE recommends that the township release the amount of $389,596 to the developer from the financial security held for the completion of required site improvements at the development. After this release, the total amount of financial security remaining is $790,008.95.
We want to have a motion, and we have the motion from Mr. Klabber. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? I have one question.
Sure.
Do we know whether that's 790,000, will that be more than one release likely?
I would, yes, I would think it's more than, more than one release, yeah.
That's pretty substantial. But what we're talking about tonight is the 389,000.
That's correct. The 389,596, correct.
Any other discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of paying the, paying the Financial Security Release Number Eight to Arcadia at Newtown Holdings, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. Anything else for our engineer this evening? Okay. Going right to our solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are two items under the solicitor's report for this evening. The first one is to consider the passing of a resolution to approve the sale of the Township's $1 million general obligation note to the First National Bank and Trust Company of Newtown, and the authorization to prepare all necessary auxiliary documents necessary to effectuate that resolution. You all receive the copy of the resolution in your packets. If you have any questions, be happy to attempt to answer them, but otherwise, I would frame a motion for you at the appropriate moment.
Would you like to frame that motion?
I can do that now, sure. It would be a motion to approve the sale of the Newtown Township's $1 million general obligation note to the First National Bank in trust of Newtown, and to authorize the preparation of all documents required to incur non-electoral debt for Newtown Township's LED lighting program and road paving projects.
Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion in a second. Any discussion from the board?
Yes, I have something.
Yes.
I do, as I've said before, like the idea of switching to LED lights in the township. I don't like the idea of raising taxes and taking out a loan for a one-time expense. So I'm not in favor of that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Yeah. Does, can you explain the process when we would actually get this money? It looks like we gotta advertise something and all that. When do we actually get the money?
Well, that's, I think the manager has that information.
So, long story short, it needs to be submitted to DCED for approval. So this is a first step in assembling that paperwork. What'll accompany it is the ordinance that'll be on the agenda for May 22nd. Once DCED receives the documentation, they have 60 days to review it and then issue the go-ahead to get to obtain a loan. And then from there, we'll go to closing.
It could be much faster.
It could be much faster, correct.
So the work to begin with the LED lights does not happen until we actually have money on hand, right?
No, we already authorize them, they just won't get paid.
Okay. Perfect.
I think I saw on your report that the construction had begun, or some of the lease pre-construction had been done.
Yeah, they're doing the pre-construction work. They're getting the proper equipment, everything like that.
Great. So we have a motion and a second, a motion, the motion's on the floor. We've had board comment. Any comment from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of, the motion that Jerry framed for us, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four, one.
The second item on the solicitor's report is to consider the advertisement and recommendations of the adoption of the definition amendments to the ordinances that we have and the maximum impervious surface ordinances, which were reviewed by this, by this body at the last meeting and is recommended by the Planning Commission. To give you a bit more detail, the ordinances as they exist have definitions that are enumerated. The recommendation and the amendments, remove the enumeration and leave everything in alphabetical order. That makes everything easier as these things are amended over time, because otherwise, it becomes very difficult to follow the numbers in a proper sequence, and it gets out of, out of sequence very easily. So that's one, one of the items. The second item is as to the maximum impervious surface. That only addresses and writes town and upper Mayfield. We don't have the particular zoning involved, but there was a mistake made the last time these ordinances were published, and that was 10 or 15 years ago. That the impervious surface, which was supposed to be 50%, was actually published as 5%. Significant mistake. So they've been fighting about it every, every time it comes up with an, with an application and said, no, it's supposed to be 50%. So this will just clear that up. All the changes will be made to correct that, and it will, it'll be 50% for those districts hereafter, as it was supposed to be.
So we actually have two ordinances that we're considering here.
Correct.
Do we need to break them apart from each other? Consider them separately, or?
I could certainly do it that way. It makes it easier that way, have cleared the delineated votes. That's, that's fine. The first motion would be to, to approve the advertisement of the amended definitions, definitions of all ordinances in the jointure.
Would someone like to make that motion? I will. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Could the solicitor explain this ordinance one more time?
Yes, the ordinances, if you go through the, a lot of these land use ordinances, the definitions section, listed by numbers, one through whatever, and every time there's an amendment, you have to try to fit in where that new amendment would fit in the proper enumeration. So they, they're recommending that we change that from numbers to making all definitions alphabetical. It just makes it easier to follow over time. Because what happens is, and you've seen this with the jointure, the ordinances are passed and instituted, and then they, it's very difficult to amend anything, and the things remain, even if there's a mistake involved, it's very difficult to make it, to correct them thereafter. And that's why we, when I was the jointure solicitor, we spent two years, we're still finishing it up now, trying to amend all these ordinances so they're actually up to date.
Okay. And this is a benefit to Newtown Township?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It affects us also, yeah.
Any further questions for our solicitor? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question on the definitions ordinance. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you. If the board is of mind, the second motion will be to advertise, approve the advertisement of the maximum impervious surfaces ordinances in the jointure, in the James EO, from 5% to back to 50%.
With that correction?
Yes, that correction.
Would someone like to make that motion?
Someone.
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. A motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion from the board?
The effect of this on the, on our township alone?
We don't have these particular zones, and the mistake was made on rural, certain rural zonings. So it doesn't impact Newtown directly, but we have to approve it just so Wrightstown and Upper Mayfield can correct it and make use of it.
Okay.
But we have, we don't have those zones in Newtown.
Gotcha.
What is it? AI and AIR?
Yes.
I didn't think we had any in Newtown. I meant to look. Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Thank you. My name's Stephen Keely, 63, Alfred's Court, Delancey Court. I believe all of the supervisors have been in receipt of a letter from our Board of, our--
Is this about the motion that we're talking about right now? Which is the--
No, no, it's about the presentation that was made earlier and the letters that were sent to you.
Okay. Would you, would you mind hanging in? Because the agenda's pretty short. We'll be, we'll be into our second round of public comment within like five or 10 minutes.
Okay.
And that would be appropriate then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions about this, this ordinance, making the correction in the zoning and the impervious? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one.
That is all the solicitor's report.
Thank you. Mr. Schenkman.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lewis, manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance as of this evening is $9,087,878. Plan expirations before the board, with no action required. This evening, we have Chief Hearn to address his monthly chief's report. Even chief.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, board members. August police report, we documented 2,415 calls for service. We logged just over 25,000 miles on our patrol fleet. Month April was busy. We had 22 arrests and clearances, one for burglary in violation of protection order, two for assault, two for theft, eight narcotics, one fraud, one warrant, criminal mischief, and seven DUIs. There were 18 new cases referred to detectives for investigations and eight crime scenes processed, some of which include two residential burglaries, three child lines, four frauds, one elder abuse, three thefts, two death investigations, two attempted suicides, and one assist up at Central Bucks East High School. The suicide attempts, to assure you, were, one was actually a hanging, and one was laceration. The laceration was actually located by our officers in a wooded area, and our officers used tourniquets to stop the bleed and attract them from the wooded area for EMS. So we did save a life with that extrication. We had 56 traffic crashes for the month, 190 traffic citations with 233 warnings. We had one truck enforcement detail due to weather conditions, resulting in 10 inspections, one citation, and five warnings. Notable jobs and significant events for the month. On 4/4, we had a large superload escort approved by PennDOT come through our township and disrupted our traffic about 12:30 to 1 o'clock in the afternoon through rush hour. We were unaware of that actual escort motorcade. We were in contact with PennDOT. We did submit for reimbursements, and we have no feedback at this time. On 4/19, at Central Bucks East High School, we assisted Buckingham Township for a possible armed subject at the school. We provided command, investigative, and patrol support to that organization. Public service announcements. With warmer weather coming, please lock your vehicles. Do not leave valuables inside your car. On May 2nd, we hired Amir Raza from Upper Mayfield Police Department as one of our new officers. He was sworn in May 2nd at Judge Petrusi's office. We had our drug takeback on 4/27, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., collecting over 95 pounds of unwanted narcotics. We participated in the Newtown Business Association Expo on April 30th from 4:00 to 7:00 at Rafters. Upcoming in May, just this past weekend, we had our police cops, cars, and classic cars show at May 4th, from 8:30 to 11:00 at Veterans Park. It's a good event. May 10th, at 3:15 p.m., we were involved in a softball game against the Newtown Fire Department, where we planned on beating the fire department at that softball game. So the community is invited to that. All charity events go to the Bucks County Hero Scholarship Show. And on Friday, May 17th, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., we're having a coffee with a cop at the new Dunkin' Donuts in Wrightstown. And on May 20th, at 7:00 p.m. at St. Andrews Church, is our annual police memorial honoring the fallen officers from Bucks County who laid their life down for this public, and the entire public's invited. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the chief?
Yeah, hey, chief, on a light note here, I like the item that's called auto versus deer. Who's winning?
The auto's winning, with significant damage usually.
They just won't cross where it says deer crossing, huh?
They don't look both ways before crossing the street, sir. Thanks, chief. You're welcome. Thank you, chief.
I have a question. What makes you so sure you're gonna beat the fire department?
Excuse me?
What makes you so sure you're gonna beat the fire department? Is that, what happened last year?
I don't, we didn't play last year.
Oh, okay.
We got weapons. We got a bigger gang.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Mr. Chair, if I may ask the manager a quick question?
Sure.
Okay. I know you had mentioned that our general fund is $9 million, and we know that we don't carry that for the full year. If we did, we'd be ecstatic, but what is the reason for the, the large amount at this moment?
So the real estate taxes are coming due before the penalty period and in the discount period, so we had a, a large influx of those payments, and we also had our quarterly EIT deposits recently. So that's what's, which, what's inflating that number a little bit. We also have a lot of obligations that we've not yet paid, so that number will come down.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have two more items under our report this evening. First of which is, Chief Hearn was approached by Bucks County to, for the police force to join the county's co-responder program, which gives the police department access to a social worker at their discretion. There is no cost to the township for the first three years, which is the duration of this memorandum of understanding, so it's another asset that the township has access to should we need it. So the appropriate motion would be authorization to execute the co-responder memorandum of agreement with Bucks County.
I'd like to make that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. We have any discussion from the board?
I'm very happy to see this, especially when the chief just talked about attempted suicides. I think that's one of the items, the types of calls that a, a social worker can help with, obviously after the fact, maybe help prevent those kinds of things from happening in our township. I know it's very difficult sometimes, so I think this is a good idea.
Is this our first time doing this?
Yes, this is a new program.
What happens in three years? Does it automatically renew?
No, we have the option of opting out, or I believe they would, they would be asking for money to support it.
Thank you.
I have some experience from the mental health side of this, with this model. I have some experience from the mental health side of this, with this model. We used it in Philadelphia years ago, twenty, twenty years ago, it's been around for a while, twenty years ago for homeless outreach. And so when the police would encounter homeless folks, they'd call in a social work team. So I know it can work, whether it works in Bucks County, I know it works, has worked in Philly because it's continued in various, in various ways. I know there was a question about the training, but I think we ironed the training question out, that the county be responsible for training them. Any other comments, questions from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of, what are we doing, approving, authorizing the execution of the co-responder memorandum of agreement with Bucks County? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Final item under our report is for the purchase of four portable radios for the Fire Department. As you recall, we've recently brought on four new employees, we need to equip those employees with proper equipment. We had twenty-eight thousand dollars budgeted in the Fire Capital Fund for this purchase. The quote came back at twenty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars and change. So the appropriate motion would be authorization to purchase four portable radios in the amount of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars and four cents through Co-Stars from the Fire Capital Fund.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Usually, usually we go under the figure that's quoted in the budget, this is just a little bit more.
Just a little bit more.
Any other comments from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of authorizing the purchase of four portable radios in the amount of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars and four cents through Co-Stars from the capital, Fire Capital Fund, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes our report.
All right. Ready to go to minutes, bills list, and reports. Mr. Mack?
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the April twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four Board of Supervisors meeting.
We have a motion, do we have a second? I'll second it. Have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board, questions, corrections? Seeing none, any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the minutes of April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Okay. I move that we pay our May eighth, twenty-twenty-four bills totaling three hundred and twenty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-five cents.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions from the board? Any from the public? Let me call the question. All those in favor of paying our bills as found on the May eighth bills list, say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four one.
Finally, I move that we approve funds transfers of two hundred and ninety-two thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-two cents as per the May eighth, twenty-twenty-four bills list.
We have a motion, do we have a second? I'll second it. Have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of paying our bills, paying our interfund transfers as found on the May eighth bills list, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Mack. Coming to our second round of public comment, now would be the time to come forward and make your further statement.
Thank you for the opportunity to ask a couple of questions regarding the letters that I believe I started to say were sent to each supervisor regarding the concern we have about the traffic situation with the development of this property adjacent to our existing facility here. I believe we adequately expressed our opinions, the HOA Board, as well as the opinions of the residents, they had a two-hundred-and-fourteen residents that are concerned about this. And we're just looking to see, I know it's a thorny question, it was voted on already in one respect two weeks ago, but we're just wondering what resolution, if any, we can expect to hear about the situation? Are any of you in agreement with or want to explore it a little bit further as far as the traffic situation is concerned?
I'm not even sure how we would do that. I might ask the solicitor if there's even a way to do that.
It's typically a public comment, but there is going to be a land development process. There will be a land development process where all this will be reviewed in detail. That's the time to really bring your experts, bring your, your residents, and take your positions and ask all your questions. This will be before the planning commission first, and then before the board supervisors thereafter.
And what would the timeframe be on that?
I don't have it, it hasn't been scheduled yet, so I really can't tell you, but you'll be notified. It'll be on our website in due course, in advance of that. I just don't know what it's, when it will be.
Okay. It can often take months to go from the, I guess it was a conditional approval that we did, to developing full sets of plans, which is what land development, land development is.
So you're saying there's several other steps to go through before it becomes final?
One major, one major one, and that's land development.
Okay.
And it gets looked at by our planning commission, and it would get looked at by the board.
Okay. Okay, just appreciate your, you know, taking the time to consider what our concerns are. And I need, I think I have to point out something. When you sit out here in the audience, the acoustics in here are terrible.
We have approved a hundred and twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars for upgrades to this room.
Yeah, that may take some months, too.
We're starting, we're starting to order some of the supplies.
I think the traffic studies come into play at the land development in detail. At that point, they might explain, you know, how they're going to mitigate the traffic problems, and I'm not sure if they are going to submit a new traffic impact study. I know you had criticisms of that. We'll have to take a look at that, all that data.
And our engineers will look at the traffic study as well.
Yep.
Okay, I'm still not clear on the window of time we have. Is it a month, two months, six months?
I'd say yes. I'm not trying to be funny, actually I am. Hasn't been...
The applicant has to submit fully engineered plans for the development. That includes the traffic study, that includes, make sure that the proper impervious surface is provided, includes parking, and whatever else is relevant to it. Landscaping, for example, trash removal, all kinds of things. All those things will be reviewed and considered first by the planning commission, where you and your folks should come at first with your traffic study and anybody else who wants to be here. And then the planning commission will make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors as to what we should approve and what we should not approve.
Okay, so the next step is the planning commission we should be attentive to?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll deal with it in detail.
Okay. Appreciate that.
And Mr. Lewis, they get, if you're, was it five hundred feet, that they get letters or get notice of the meeting?
Within five hundred feet, they do, but I think you can notify anybody else once you hear about it. Because there are a lot of people that will be impacted by this.
Yes, I can...
But the question of five hundred feet is whether you have standing at a hearing.
But that, also, that's just for zoning, not for the planning commission?
No. That's right. Well, we listen to everybody that comes in.
Okay. All right. Thanks for your, thanks for listening, and please take into account the traffic, especially up in Newtown Grant, what it's going to affect, meaning people making left turns at the light to come south again to come, enter the facility. It's a...
Yeah, and at that corner.
I'm sure you will be. All right, good. You and a couple hundred other people. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. John D. April, Newtown Grant, biggest, remember that word, and best. I guess it all depends where you live, the comments that come out of a lot of these people, like the guy that sent the email about the Chick-fil-A, I mean, he sees it as a residential neighborhood. Was residential about a closed-down bank, closed-down Newtown rental, closed-down deli or whatever it was, Joey G's or the guy who bought it after that, you know, a church, a bank, dentist's office, and a whole bunch of office buildings on the other side. And he's calling it a residential area? Well, you know, beg to differ. Talked about the LED lighting, you know, tax and taxes spent, Democrats again, they're at it again, and I'll bring it up again. You have, you're going to put LED lighting in the streets in Newtown, but your regulations don't allow businesses to have LED lightings. Got to get one of them fixed. Traffic on four thirteen, I mean, I've said it before, the traffic anywhere in this area is going to get worse with the building of new houses, new businesses, and all that stuff. It doesn't have to be here, it could be in, new, people come past here sometimes. And it's funny that, like I said, some residents see things differently. It's funny that the resident that complained about traffic on four thirteen built his house in an area that's surrounded on three sides by the biggest and the best, Newtown Grant. I mean, what, what do they want? NIMBY attitudes, or I, I don't know. They have to, look at the whole project, the whole thing. I mean, I'm pro-business. I hate to see business get turned down, and especially, as I said, with the daycare. Anybody that tried to get their kid into daycare knows how hard it is in this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. D. April. Any others? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Charles Foyer, Newtown Walk, representing a large group of concerned citizens over traffic signaling at a mid-block crosswalk at Newtown Yardley Road and Tara Boulevard. I think you'll recall this project was approved in twenty-twenty-two. And I'd like to thank Chief Hearn because the township police are now stationed at this crosswalk every day. Excuse me. Because the seriousness of the danger at this crosswalk has been expressed, and it seems as if it's warranted, police monitoring on a daily basis now. And what, what the group of concerned people, grandparents, parents, children who've been here and spoken, have asked me and continue to ask me is, what is the holdup with this project? And I do my best to report back to them, and I respected the request of the board and the township manager to go to emailing to present the questions that represent the request on a continuous basis for a status update. And for the last four months, the status update was the township engineer was in some sort of back and forth comments and questions with PennDOT over a plan that was submitted on January fifth of this year. And I saw a copy of that plan, and I've seen the comments, and I, and the group has gone as far as to go to state representative, state senator, and I took the initiative and went directly to PennDOT and spoke to Mr. McCourt, Mr. Patel. And it became abundantly clear that a refuge island at this mid-block crosswalk was warranted. And through emails, we have tried to help the township get this traffic signaling constructed to protect grandparents, parents, children. So it's been four months of reporting that we're waiting for comments from PennDOT, but I discovered that that wasn't true. And I'm here tonight to ask for answers to questions, which I did submit through emails. And thank you, Mr. Township Manager, for giving me the procedure. It didn't answer the questions, though. It simply stated what the procedure is. And that's getting cost estimates for revisions to a plan before you submit the revised plans. I can understand that. I actually went to the extent of getting the Burrows Traffic Signal Update Project with line items to include fixtures that would hopefully be used in this project and other elements. And I was informed that this is simply cookie cutter, take rough figures, and yet that analysis has taken a month. And the last comment from our township engineer was, we can start to look at plan revisions. To coin a phrase from my mother, it's beyond belief that this has taken this long. So I have a couple of questions that I'm hoping if I present them directly, they can be answered. When did the township engineer come to the determination that PennDOT, through comments and questions, is requiring a refuge island on this mid-block crosswalk? When was that determination reached after four months? Next question, when will the second plan with revisions be submitted to PennDOT for approval? Will it include the refuge island, which has become obviously a requirement? Next question is, what is this, and this has been asked countless times, to the point where our group was pointed out that we didn't need to attend every meeting, but we never got the answers. What is the specific timeline of events from today? When will the revised plan be submitted? What is the expected time of approval for that to get the permit? RVE has already told us that then there's thirty days for... RVE has already told us that then there's 30 days for a development of an estimate or bid process, then there's 60 days for the bids to be replied to, and then there's another 60, 90 days until construction can begin. If our township engineer can supply the answers to the public, that would be extremely helpful because we're being asked by citizens in this township every day, when is the crosswalk signaling going to be constructed? And for our township solicitor, what is the township's legal exposure in the case of a death or an accident at this crosswalk when this project was approved in 2022? Thanks very much.
Was able to capture your questions, I think I got them right. What did, when did REV recognize that PennDOT was requiring the refuge island? That was number one. Number two, when will the second plan be sent to PennDOT? And third one is, what is the specific timeline of events? So I got the, yeah, okay, through construction. Okay.
Or was liability.
Okay, I missed that one.
Can I get a clarification? The plan originally was this overhead thing, and now that PennDOT doesn't like that, they want this refuge island, is that how the plan has to change, basically?
Yes, yeah.
So have you determined that we have enough funds for that?
Yes, we have. I mean, that's what the whole process was for doing the cost estimate. Now that PennDOT is requiring these improvements, we wanted to put together our estimates presented to township to let them know what the cost impact would be to update the plans with PennDOT's requirements.
Well, it's not a matter of cost, it's a matter of you coming up with the plan to submit to PennDOT. We have the money.
We, yes, we have now, to answer the question about when we received the PennDOT comments for the refuge island, it was April 16th, and in that time, we updated the cost estimate, we compared it to what the grant funding was that we had been approved for, we determined that the cost impact, what that would be, and in speaking with the township staff, it's, it won't have, we can proceed with the design with the PennDOT improvements, and it won't have, it shouldn't impact with the funding that we've received from the RLE grant.
And I assume that the RVE has experience in designing such refuge islands?
Yes.
Not refuges, refuge.
Refuge island, yes.
Yeah, so that would be like a little elevated with the curb on it and so forth?
That's right.
Rather than having the sticks in the road that is currently there?
That's right, yeah. Well, the delineators, depending on where the extent of the refuge island may possibly still stay where they're located, but that's yet to be determined.
Okay, I know when I'm driving down that road, I try to stay to 25 miles per hour, but there are cars close behind me thinking that, you know, why, how am I going so slow? And then I notice as soon as I get into the borough, they all do slow down to 25. So people don't know what that speed limit currently is, and I know there's been lots of signs there from the police department.
There are signs.
And so on, so that's a factor, even when you have this island, people are not obeying the speed limit, and I just hope that they begin to, you know, obey the law, basically. Thanks.
They'll obey when they're behind me.
What's it gonna take?
I hear 25.
What's it gonna take to get this done?
At this point, we are going to update the plans and submit them to PennDOT, but as we all know, you know, it's a matter of time of getting the comments back, hopefully approval, and then at that point, compiling all the bid documents and putting it out to public bid.
But RVE will do this in the quickest manner possible.
Absolutely.
And if there's a way we could, is there a way we could support PennDOT to make a faster determinate approval this time?
We can certainly do our best to try.
And of course, we'll know when you send, when you send the second, the revised plans.
Yeah, once we have the revised plans, we'll provide them to the township for their review and approval before putting anything out to bid, you know, obviously for construction.
And I don't know that we can give an answer about a specific timeline here tonight, and I don't know about the liability issue, that's certainly far from me. But I just, speaking of liability, I would just point out, I think we'd all agree that things have been done. We've put signage up, we've striped the road, we've reduced the speed limit, we've got multiple signage, and I'm trying to think what else we, oh, the enforcement, which you mentioned. So we continue, I mean, we have, that might mitigate some of that liability, I would think, to the fact that we have made some of those changes. I share, I think we would all agree, we'd like this to be over, we'd like this to be completed. I don't know any one of us who don't want to get it done as soon as possible, and we'll continue to work with you on that. I know it's been slower progress than we want, but we all agree that we need to get it done. And I must say, I appreciate the group's advocacy, but also, Mr. Foyer, your consistency, your persistence. So, thank you. Any other public comment this evening? Any new business, any old business? Any need for an executive session? There is none. Seeing that and hearing that, and with no objection, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you for coming.